All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It's Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. And if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Piles.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Ullaberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Mayor Protem files, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Thank you. And our first order of business is the reading of our Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. And joining us tonight is Chris Trujillo. And I don't see Bobby. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationally from September 15th through October 15th to honor the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas the observance begins on September 15th, the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, with Mexico celebrating independence on September 16th and Chile on September 18th. And whereas Hispanic Americans have long enriched the social, cultural, and economic fabric of our nation, and in Montrose their contributions are evident in our schools, businesses, arts, agriculture, and community leadership. And whereas the Mexican-American Development Association, MADA, founded in 1973, has been a cornerstone of community life in Montrose, advocating for its full rights, providing education and leadership development, preserving cultural traditions, and fostering economic opportunity for generations of families. And whereas the city of Montrose recognizes the ongoing efforts of MADA and community partners to celebrate and preserve Hispanic heritage through events, storytelling, education, food, music, and cultural exchange that bring people together and strengthen our shared future. Whereas this month provides an opportunity for all residents of Montrose to learn from and celebrate the Hispanic community's resilience, creativity, and leadership, and to reaffirm our commitment to equity, inclusion, and belonging. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Montrose and encourage all residents to join in celebrating the contributions and culture of our Hispanic community. And witness whereof, I have heron to set my hand and cost me affixed the seal of the city of Montrose this 7th day of October, 2025.
One of the things that we have going is the, one of the things I've been studying is the slavery, Indian slavery. And that's where a lot of our people came from. We were freed Native Americans, and we established a lot of settlements. But we lost our cultural connections. So we established, we came with the Spanish. We learned their customs, they learned ours. But I would like to thank you for helping us at MADA. You guys did a lot of good for us, and you guys will always support us. So I appreciate it, and I wish to thank all the city of Montrose and all the employees for all the help you guys give us. Thank you.
Moving on to our next agenda item is the call for public comment. Agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from using any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel unemployment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. Is there anyone making, wishing to make public comment today? Yes, please, if you would, come forward. We give you three minutes. We tell you when you have 30 seconds left. And if you would, please state your name and where you're from.
So usually you guys hear concerns, I am the opposite today. I just wanted to say this to the council members. My name is Mallory Shaker. I'm the founder and executive director of the Montrose Children's Museum. I'm here tonight to just express my heartfelt gratitude for your continued support and partnership within our organization. Before we even had a building to call home, the city of Montrose believed in our vision. You allowed us to use the Centennial Room for early pop-up events. It's really our powerful act that helped us reach families, test ideas, and share the dream of hands-on learning in the museum. Those early opportunities planted the seeds for what has now become a thriving community resource. So since opening, we have served over 9,500 visitors.
It's a lot louder when it's plugged in.
Through our doors. Children, parents, and grandparents experiencing learning through play. We've served more than 400 students within, across the school districts in the region through field trips and educational programs. We've also served over 400 individuals through our Museums for All program, which allows people on SNAP benefits, families on SNAP benefits, to get in for free. And since 2023, thanks to the generosity of our community and local supporters like the city of Montrose, we've raised over $266,000 to sustain and grow our operations. Looking ahead, one of our goals is to have a, in the next few years, is to bring a city services exhibit to our museum. And that would just be like a rotating, interactive experience where children can learn about how the city works. We plan to start with a hands-on recycling center featuring the model of the city's trash trucks and recycling operations, and then rotate it through departments such as the police department, water and sanitation services, and public works. This exhibit will give the children a deeper understanding of how local governments support their daily lives while celebrating the essential work that our employees do every day. From our earliest pop-ups to the Centennial Room to today, the city's support has been woven into every stage of our growth. You believed in the power of play, learning, and community. And because of that, over 9,500 people have had the chance to experience something special in Montrose. On behalf of our board, staff, volunteers, and all families that we serve, thank you guys for helping us make this vision a reality and for continuing to champion the importance of creativity and connection in our community. So on behalf of everybody, thank you guys for your continued support.
Thank you, thank you. Next person.
Good evening. My name is Michael Murphy. I'm here representing the library. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees and mainly want to talk about the upcoming election. We have two ballot measures that are going to be on the ballot this fall, 6A and 6B. So just wanted to communicate to the council members and to the city why we're urging a yes vote on 6A and 6B. In 2017, the voters approved a .85 mill levy increase for the library. This extra funding was approved for 10 years and is already included in your current property tax bill, but will end in 2027 unless extended. 6A asks voters to make that temporary measure permanent. So it's not a new tax, it's an extension of the current tax. In 2026, if this was approved, the amount of this tax would be $27 for a house valued at $500,000. So not a major tax. In the 2017 campaign that asked for this .85 mill levy increase, there were five promises that the library made and said they would do if the funding increase was approved. Those five promises were to open seven days a week instead of five. To increase the size of collection, it has gone from under half a million to over 6 million items available through the library. Bringing the library to you, the library has invested in a fleet of vehicles to be able to deliver to Aletha, to the West End, to homeschool communities, and make sure that the resources are available, provide more programs, and complete much-needed renovations. 6B responds to the new 2024 state law that was passed that caps the growth of property tax revenue in special districts to 5.25% annually. So for example, if property tax revenue goes up 11%, as it's projected to in 2026, the library would only have, see their revenue increase 5.25%. It would be capped. We're asking that 6B be approved so that the library can grow at the same pace as the community. You can imagine if the community grew at a large pace like it has over the last few, for many more, the library's funding would continue to fall behind year after year. So just a quick recap, 6A asks voters to maintain the current mill levy so the library can continue to provide the services it is throughout the county. And a yes vote on 6B will allow the library to collect the full mill levy that's been approved and grow alongside the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda item seven, approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of the September 15th, 2025 special city council meeting and the September 16th, 2025 regular city council meeting. And I would entertain a motion to approve those items.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2025 special city council meeting. Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Moving on to a fun item. Our next item on the agenda is our youth city council appointment. City Council consideration of applicant Kiera Oldroyd for position on the 2025-2026 Montrose Youth City Council. And if you wouldn't mind, Kiera, come on up. And if you would, please just briefly tell us, why do you want to be on youth city council?
I would like to be on youth city council because I really am interested in seeing how the inner workings of Montrose works. And I'm also interested in taking like a government class, and I'm just really interested in like, just seeing how the government works and like, just like aspects of it and what really like founds and like grounds like our country and the city.
Excellent. Well, we're really happy to have you stepping forward to join our youth city council. And having said that, entertain a motion.
I move we accept her for the, for the youth council appointment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Sometimes it's hard to find the right item.
Thanks, Kiera.
And that passes unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving on to item number nine, sole source purchase request for Montrose Pavilion Lighting. City Council consideration of a sole source waiver and purchasing totaling $181,850 from Barbizon Lighting Company for Montrose Pavilion Lighting upgrades in the auditorium and lobby area. And addressing this will be our Pavilion Operations Coordinator, Danny Kinamaka.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and the city council, thank you for letting me address you this evening. Pavilion is in need of a lighting system upgrade from the building's original dimming system, which is now 35 years old. This lighting system upgrade was included in the 2025 fiscal year budget, but due to our scheduling conflicts, we're not able to complete that this year. We would like to purchase the equipment this year so that we don't, so that we can lock in the better pricing and also take into account the long lead times for the equipment that we're purchasing. The dollar amount of this project obviously requires city council approval. The lighting system that we're talking about controls the lobby lights, the auditorium house lights, and the auditorium stage lights. This is close to 180 20-amp circuits, so it's a substantial amount of control. One of the drivers for this project is a switch to LED lighting to become more efficient. And as everybody knows, old dimmers don't play well with new LED lights. The proposal includes LED lamps, high-performance LED lamps for the existing fixtures in the auditorium house lights. We have already been upgrading to LEDs throughout the lobby, and our stage lighting is actually in pretty good shape. The dimming system that we currently have also is undergoing some stress with the age that it is. The company that built this system has been out of business since 2008. So, excuse me, we're not able to get spare parts or get repairs to this. The company that we are going, that we are asking for the sole source waiver, Barbizon Lighting, is one of the, one of the few companies that does this type of system in the area. It's, they're out of Denver, they've got multiple offices throughout the country. There are other companies that could do this, but we're looking at Las Vegas or Salt Lake City possibly. I am more than willing to answer any questions anybody has for this.
Any questions for Danny?
35 years on electrical system that gets used quite a bit is a good service.
We've been trying to keep up with the maintenance on it, but enough lightning strikes is getting, some things are getting a little funky.
One of the things that was mentioned during our work session that I thought was really important was that if we get the equipment now, order it and have it in place, we can fit it into scheduling that the events that are scheduled in the pavilion, because the pavilion is a very, very busy structure and organization. And having the equipment on hand means we can actually fit it into the one little niche that might pop up as far as available scheduling. And I think that's an important consideration as well. So having said that, I would accept any public comment on this item. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a sole source waiver and purchase totaling $181,850 from Barbizon Lighting Company for Montrose Pavilion Lighting upgrades as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thanks, Danny.
Thanks, Danny.
Moving on to item number 10, Child Care Facility Operator Agreement. City Council consideration of an operating agreement between the city of Montrose and Access Early Education Foundation for childcare operations at 703 South 9th Street. And this is our Community Development Director, Jace Hawkeall.
Yeah, good evening, city council. I provided a fairly thorough overview of this operational standpoint at the city council work session on September 15th. So if anybody wants to watch that video, certainly more than welcome. There have been no changes since that, since those discussions, aside from a typo that Jay David Reed had actually pointed out. So we have fixed that, and all is good there. In addition, I did want to point out, I have a very thorough staff report that really goes into depth about the steps, the history, how we got here. So anybody that wants kind of the specific information, please look to that report as well. I wasn't totally sure how many people were going to be here tonight. I have kind of a longer presentation and a shorter presentation. I wanted to lay out all the facts because I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this. But, Mr. Mayor, I'll look to you. Do you want the briefer presentation, the more brief presentation, or should I just go all in here?
I think because you gave such an exhaustive presentation at our work session, that people can actually look that up online. I'd say go ahead and use your discretion.
Perfect. It still will be a little lengthy, but brief, more brief than would have been. So again, just for a little bit of history, childcare has really been a key topic of discussion at the city and other large employers for years in Montrose. Nothing new there. Back in 2021, Root Policy completed a Montrose County Childcare Needs Assessment, and that study provided some very valuable information. And one of the big findings was that Montrose is a childcare desert. I don't think this is a surprise to anyone, but I just want to reiterate that on the front end. All the discussions regarding the construction, the design, that has taken place already with Jimshide over the course of the last couple of months, so I won't dig in there, but I do include that in my packet. So jumping into the operating agreement, which is tonight's action, after months of speaking with several organizations that either contract out childcare services or manage their services in-house, what we decided to do back in March of this year was issue an RFP, Request for Proposal, seeking qualified operators for a childcare facility, specifically this one at 703 South 9th Street. The idea of that, the idea behind that was really to see whether there was capable partners interested in managing the center, and if not, we would explore how we were going to run it ourselves. Through that RFP process, we received two proposals. After careful review, we selected or determined that Access Early Education Foundation was our preferred operator. They're a nonprofit organization based out of Grand Junction. They've got an excellent reputation and track record on the Western Slope, currently operating facilities in Grand Junction, Rifle, Gunnison, and the like. Their proposal stood out for a few reasons. It was flexible and cost-effective, that was a very big component. And again, they had extensive experience on the Western Slope, particularly working with municipalities and working with larger employers for employer-based centers. And it was, you know, just an overall great proposal, and they've been fantastic to work with. And again, I mentioned it in the work session, but they really helped us throughout the design process as well, helping us figure out some of the licensing standards. That Jimshide is fantastic when it comes to construction, as well as our facilities team. Childcare is a different ballgame, and we found that out. And we were very fortunate to have Access involved really throughout that design process to help add an extra classroom, not have any really crazy redesign costs or reconstruction costs later on. So specifically to the contracts, we've set some terms within it. First, I'll touch on the hours of operation. So the facility will be open Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. This is different from existing facilities, most which operate 7:30 to 5:30 or 8 to 5. So we are expanding those hours of operation to support first responders, city staff, those with a kind of longer shift work, which will be really important and is unseen in the community today. Rates and kind of a city subsidy here, so while rates aren't quite set, I indicated in my presentation in the work session, we are very close to kind of solidifying what those will be. Right now, that's $72 a day for infants, 66 a day for toddlers, and 58 a day for preschool. This is very comparable and in line with current market rates as we didn't really want this facility to undercut any private childcare that exists here in Montrose. So very important aspect there. Also, within that contract, we are proposing a 20% discount rate for city employees. This would be subsidized by the city, and this would support both recruitment and retention of city staff, especially those that are becoming parents. We've learned that what we're looking at is probably about a third to half of the facility will be occupied by city employees, the children. So certainly not the full thing, and I'll touch on that here in a little bit. Childcare staff compensation, this is something that's, I think, really fantastic that we're offering. So to address workforce challenges in the childcare sector, the contract requires that teachers be paid 10% above market rate. The state keeps these wages updated annually in the Montrose area, and with this agreement, no employees at the facility will make less than $20 an hour. I think this is extremely beneficial to the community, showing kind of hope and optimism as far as increasing of wages within this field. And also, it really, I think, will help attract and retain quality staff at this facility as well. From a financial support standpoint, what we're looking at is an initial startup of about $50,000 for the operations, more or less just to get that ramp-up period going for the operator. And then beyond that, we'll have a monthly subsidy based on actual staffing and enrollment levels. I mentioned this in the work session, but we're expecting the subsidy to be about $150,000 to $200,000 total. That's inclusive of that $50,000 I mentioned. That number is kind of worst-case scenario. That doesn't include any grants or anything like that. We just want to provide the full picture, and any grants would cut that subsidy cost down. And then lastly, enrollment prioritization. So we're kind of going with a three-tiered approach for enrollment of children within the facility. First tier would be city employees. They would have first priority. And again, based on a recent survey, we estimate about a third to half the facility being city children. And again, a total capacity of 50 children in this facility. So about half of that as city employees as we see it. Next in line would be the public and quasi-public partners that we have. So this would include organizations like the rec district, the hospital, the county, the sheriff's department, the fire district, those kind of first responders and partners. These families would pay full market rates, as I kind of indicated before with those rates. But should their employers opt in to subsize tuition, they certainly could do so just as the city is proposing for city staff. And then lastly, should any more spots be open, they would go out to the general public. So this is not solely just for city employees. This is open to city employees, quasi-public and other partner agencies, and the general public at large. And I said lastly in the last section, I'll say it again here just for the oversight and governance and what that looks like. So the facility will employ approximately 15 staff members, ones fully operational. Again, we'll see a ramp-up period that goes along with that. But fully operational is 15. And then there will be a five-member advisory board established prior to the facility's opening. And this board will provide strategic guidance on operations and usage, assist in allocation of spaces, and then review tuition rates and grant allocations in future years. Given the city's financial contribution, there will be three of the five board members as city staff. Again, I think that's just due to the financial contribution that is seen from the city. We will also include an employee from a partner organization as well as a parent of a child enrolled at the facility too. So a little bit of a mix there. And so just to conclude, if this agreement is approved tonight, staff will continue to work with Access to finalize remaining details. These are going to include licensing, kind of final construction components, tuition rates, staffing plans, ramp-up schedule, and ultimately an opening date. But we are targeting a March opening date for this facility. It's typically about 45 days after certificate of occupancy, and that's looking about early February as we see it right now. So exciting there. One thing just to mention, the childcare field is very challenging. You all probably heard of it. This is not new information that's out. And grant funding, generally speaking, is on the decline. So many providers are really struggling to stay open, and I think that's why this partnership is so critical. And what we're doing here is so critical. It's adding 50 new spaces to the community, and it's really a major step forward in supporting local families, strengthening our workforce, and continuing the city's commitment to overall well-being of the community. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
I have a comment, oh, I'm sorry. I have a comment and then a question also. But my comment is that unfortunately, I've seen and heard some negative public comments about this project from those who either don't know all the facts or who have perhaps chosen not to learn all of the facts behind this. But I will tell you that I think this is a very, very much a plus for this community. It's a real investment in our community. Two of the biggest impediments we have to, in enhancing our workforce in this community are housing and childcare. And this is going to substantially address one of those impediments. And so I look at this investment as enhancing the city of Montrose, enhancing the workforce and potential workforce for the city of Montrose. and potential workforce for the city of Montrose, for the people who live here and call this home, and hopefully will help to attract others in the future because we are able to provide this facility, which yes, will be first for city employees, second for other public sector employees, and finally open to the public. And I think your statistics show that approximately half of this will be initially for city employees, which then opens it up for public sector and the private sector. So we always seem to measure things based on a return on an investment. And can we accurately predict what that return on investment is? But I would suggest anecdotally that we're going to see a huge return on our investment. And I think this is a great thing that the city is doing and stepping forth to do this. Did have the opportunity to do a little checking on the proposed operator. They come with amazing accolades. I think the city of Grand Junction feels that this operator is outstanding, as does Colorado Mesa University campus in Grand Junction. So I think we've hit a home run, both in, as a city, having the foresight to move forward with this project and then to engage the operator that you're proposing to engage. That being said, I do have one question, and that is with respect to the incentives that we are offering. Are the incentives that we're offering comparable to incentives offered by other communities and such as Grand Junction or Colorado Mesa University?
It's a great question, and it all depends. So I can give some information about the city of Grand Junction's facility and kind of how they operate. They operate in-house. Their overall kind of deficit for their facility in-house is about $600,000. They offer very similar, as far as hours of operation, employee pay, things along those lines. When it comes to community hospital or CMU that both provide employer-based daycare centers, they don't necessarily have within their contracts increased pay for teachers. I think that is a huge plus that we are adding for this facility here. They do offer some subsidies for things like healthcare benefits and otherwise, but I think what we're offering here for the facility itself is fantastic. I don't think it's out of line by any stretch of the imagination, and I think that it will really help with recruitment and retention of staff at this facility and really high-quality care overall.
Thank you. And I would just say thanks to you, Jason, the staff that worked with you on pulling this all together, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
My question is, tier two is nurses and teachers and that, which are pretty important to the community. Are they going to be paying market rate, or do they get a discount?
Tier two would pay market rate unless their employers, unless the school district or the hospital was willing to basically chip in to have a subsidy to reduce their rates as well. And so right now, I don't know the answer to that for those individual employers, and they'll go through their budget processes. And I've been in coordination and communication with them about this, and I'll continue those communications, but ultimately, it will be up to the employer whether or not they want to provide an additional subsidy beyond that, similar to what we're doing.
The one question I have is concerning staff levels. And it is my understanding that staffing levels are mandated by the state, so it isn't that we're randomly picking a number out of a hat, that that number is mandated, one teacher per number of students, and that is what's determining our staffing levels?
Correct. Yep.
Not really a question, more of a comment.
Yeah, and I'm happy to confirm that. Yeah, so the state licensing requirements are very specific regarding staffing. There is also specifics regarding openers and closers for facilities that operate at a schedule like this. So again, the unique component of this, and it's really great for the community and those first responders and shift workers, is the extended hours of operation. With that, opening five days a week, you can't have a teacher in a classroom for all five days, so there has to be some kind of shifting and maneuvering around those schedules a little bit with the addition of openers and closers and more float staff. But yeah, ultimately, all dictated by licensing in the state. But our childcare expert is very well-versed in this and knows a lot about what she's doing, so I think we're in very good shape.
Great.
My question would be, how do we operate around vacations of different community sources utilizing this?
Operate around vacations of the staff that work for the facility?
Yeah, it would appear to me that, you know, different entities have different days off throughout the year, and how do we handle that through our staff?
I understand. So ultimately, the facility would allow for full-time care and part-time care, and that would all be determined really at the front end with the parent's contract with the facility itself. So I think that'll be determined early on as far as number of days each child has. There will be drop-in days available, too, should there be, you know, availability during weekdays when there are particular vacations or schools out or whatever it might be. You know, right now, personally, I drop my kid off, typically a drop-in, one or two Fridays a month, because that's typically the open day. I'd imagine this facility will be pretty similar, especially given city staff kind of scheduling. We'll look to the operators to really kind of fine-tune that, but I can say with confidence that, given that she has facilities that are, you know, in close proximity, the facility itself will be fully staffed to have full capacity at any given time.
Any other questions or comments from council? I guess I'll open it up. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve an operating agreement between the city of Montrose and Access Early Education Foundation for childcare operations at 703 South Ninth Street as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes four to one. Moving on to our next item, number 11, the J.C. Mitchell Edition Annexation. We will be holding a hearing on the annexation of J.C. Mitchell Edition. There are two items on this agenda item. First is Resolution 2025-16, City Council Consideration of Resolution 2025-16, Findings and Facts for the J.C. Mitchell Edition Annexation, and Ordinance 2691 on first reading, City Council Consideration, Ordinance 2691 on first reading, and Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of the J.C. Mitchell Edition. We will hold one presentation for this, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
But we will address these items individually. So handling this item is Senior Planner Will Reese.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, and members of the public. I know that we have talked about this a few times before, but tonight does serve as the official hearing date for the J.C. Mitchell Edition, where the City Council will consider the resolution and the two ordinances. This is a 4.85 acre site located within the city's urban growth boundary and city sewer and water service areas. The property is eligible for annexation per its contiguity to existing city limits. The reason for this annexation is the result of a boundary line adjustment between two properties, one of which is in city limits already, the other of which is in county. The land is transferring from the county parcel to the city parcel, and so we do want to avoid having that one property be partially in the city and partially out of it. That could, in theory, create some problems with jurisdictional issues if, say, the owner wanted to build a accessory structure on the property right where that boundary lies, who has jurisdiction, the city or the county, which regulations would be followed, et cetera. And so really, just to clean up the whole situation, this is an annexation to make sure the entirety of the property is within city limits. As with any annexation application, there must be a zoning associated with the property. The existing property that's already within the city limits is Zoned R2 Low Density District, so this is a proposal to zone this as R2 as well. R2 is intended primarily for single-family detached and duplex residential development. This is the annexation plat itself, showing the property that has been transferred or will be transferred as part of that boundary line adjustment, as well as showing the contiguity to existing city limits. This area is shown as residential mixed density low in the future land use map, which indicates the area is primarily appropriate for single-family detached development, but also potentially some small amounts of attached residential development. This is shown as being within Growth Area 1, which mostly consists of properties either already in the city or unannexed enclaves, which that is applicable here. This property is part of an enclave. If this is annexed, it would not eliminate the enclave, but it would reduce the size of an existing one. In summary, the property is eligible for annexation, and we do have an annexation agreement. Due to its small size, an annexation impact report is not required. We did bring this to the Planning Commission on August 27th for their recommendation of zoning, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the requested R2 Low Density District zoning. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-16 and ordinances 2691 and 2692 as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Reese?
Yes, please. Run that by me again. What did the Planning Commission say about this?
So they recommended approval of the R2 zoning designation.
Okay, the R2. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll start off with item A, Resolution 2025-16, and we will accept public comment. And seeing none would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-16 as presented.
Second.
Just motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Moving on to item B, Ordinance 2691 on first reading, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2691 on first reading, Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado for annexation of the J.C. Mitchell Edition. And we will hold a hearing for this item, and we'll open the hearing. And is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2691 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Item number 12 is Ordinance 2692, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2692 on first reading, and Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the J.C. Mitchell Edition as an R2 Low Density District. And we will, once again, hold a hearing, and I will open the hearing. And is there any comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2692 on first reading.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And once again, that passes unanimously. Moving on to item 13 on our agenda, Ordinance 2693 on first reading, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2693 on first reading. Oh, the screen. Sorry, just reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of Lot 1 of the Murphy Boundary Line Adjustment from R1A Large Estate District to OR Office Residential District. Once again, Senior Planner Will Reese.
Thank you again. Lot 1 of the Murphy Boundary Line Adjustment is east of town along Highway 50, out towards the very edge of the existing city limits. This is a site that is 3.91 acres in size and is currently Zoned R1A Large Estate District. This was annexed and zoned in 2000 originally. The owners have requested a rezone to OR Office Residential District. According to the rezone criteria found in Section 11712 Subsection A of the Municipal Code, amendments to the zoning map shall be allowed only upon findings as follows. The amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the existing zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area affected have changed materially since the area was last zoned. The requested zoning of OR Office Residential District is intended to provide for a mix of offices and residential dwellings in areas adjacent to commercial zones or in areas in transition from residential to commercial uses. The property is adjacent to another property Zoned R1A, as well as areas outside of existing city limits. According to the future land use map, this is shown as residential mixed density low, indicating that the area is appropriate primarily for single-family residential development, and then it is also within the designated Gateway District, indicating the property's location along the highway corridor, one of the main entrances into the city, indicating that it's also potentially appropriate for some potential commercial and/or industrial uses. The proposed zoning of Office Residential does, in staff opinion, serve as a good mix between those two future land use designations. This was brought before the Planning Commission for their recommendation on August 27th, where they did unanimously recommend approval of the proposed rezone. Staff finds that the proposal is in compliance with the rezone criteria and the comprehensive plan, and recommends approval of Ordinance 2693 on first reading as presented. And once again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Being right next to the water facility out there, were they notified, had the opportunity to do any input on this?
Yes. We sent letters to all adjacent property owners, all property owners within 300 feet, which does include Project 7. They did have the opportunity to provide public comment if they wished.
They didn't make any comment then?
No.
Thank you.
The one thing I noticed in the presentation in our packet that I thought was very wise use of resources is the recommendation of staff, rather than zoning it as a business zoning B1 or B2 or B3, that they recommended the Office Residential as a great compromise because it prevents the development of a large commercial development right on the edge of the highway, and since that is a view corridor. I think that's a really wise, and I salute the staff's recommendation and their participation on this. I think it's a great job.
Thank you.
Having said that, we will hold a hearing on this item, and I will open the hearing and accept any public comment on this item. And seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2693 on first reading. Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And that item passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item, item 14. And you can feel free to leave, it's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ordinance 2694 on first reading, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2694 on first reading, and Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district designation of a portion of Lot 1 of the Black Canyon Golf Course Boundary Line Adjustment from P, Public District, to R1A Large Estate District. And once again, Will Reese.
Thank you again. Lot 1 of the Black Canyon Golf Course Boundary Line Adjustment is also addressed as 2400 Columbine Lane, where there was recently an adjustment to the property line that transferred a 0.62 acre piece of the property to the existing residential property from the golf course. That little piece that has been transferred is still technically Zoned P, Public District, despite the fact that it is no longer part of the golf course, and so this is a request to just rezone that piece to R1, R1A Large Estate District, just to match with the rest of the property. Again, this is the same rezone criteria as before. Staff does find that the request does meet the rezone criteria in the municipal code. The proposed R1A zoning is intended to provide for large, single-household detached dwelling residential lots within a semi-rural environment. This is adjacent to properties Zoned R1A Large Estate District and P, Public District. This is just a plat showing an exact meets and bounds description of the property to be rezoned, and this is exactly what was transferred from the golf course to the single-family home. While the comprehensive plan does show this little piece as public, that is because the property was part of the golf course lot when the comprehensive plan was property was part of the golf course lot when the comprehensive plan was published. Since this is now part of the single-family lot, staff does feel that it is appropriate to rezone this piece to residential. Staff finds that this proposal meets the rezone criteria and is compatible with the surrounding area. We also brought this request to the Planning Commission on August 27th, where they made a unanimous recommendation of approval. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 2694 as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is this piece of land not currently being used by the golf course?
Correct.
It's just sitting there?
Correct.
With weeds, et cetera?
Yes. So this specific piece of land was transferred from the golf course, where it was not being used, to that adjacent property owner. And so it wasn't being used when it was part of the golf course. It still is not being used as part of the golf course now that it's not owned by the city at this time.
This is basically just to clean it up since it's gone into private hands from public?
Correct.
That was the piece of property that was banked and had all the weeds and stuff on it, and nobody was using it. This was a while back, if I'm not mistaken. It was just like abandoned.
I chime in, sorry. It wasn't abandoned, but indeed, we weren't using it, the golf course, and the property owner who ended up with it right now, who owns it, they had donated it to the golf course when the golf course was first founded. And so we had, I think, over time, considered plans to use it for the golf course, and we were not using it for the golf course, and so it was deeded back to the original owner. Do you want to add anything? I just wanted to chime in. Okay.
Is there a road?
Yeah.
Is there a road back there to that property at this time?
No, and it wouldn't end up being a separate home. It's really an add-on to the adjacent property to make that property bigger.
So we will see a boundary line adjustment on that property administratively, you'll see that?
The boundary line adjustment has already been done. So as it is currently, this is a piece of property that is owned by the property owner at 2400 Columbine Lane. It is still technically zoned as a golf course despite the fact that, at this time, it is no longer a part of the golf course property.
So once again, we're faced with a split zoning, which we despise.
In certain instances, we do despise it.
Well, and it wouldn't be appropriate to be in private hands. It wouldn't be appropriate to be zoned public.
Correct.
All right, any other questions?
Is this far enough out of the way that City Manager's golf ball couldn't hit it?
Have you seen him play? All right, now, getting back to serious matters, if there are no other questions, that we would hold a hearing on this item, and I will open the hearing. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2694 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. We're missing one. Your vote didn't show up.
Yeah, something happened.
All right, well, since you made the second on the motion, that's an assumption of approval. So it passes unanimously as well.
It is. Our computer, yeah.
Yeah, he fixed it. We're done voting on things, so. All right, moving on to our item 15, our staff reports. Are there any staff that wish to make a report to council this evening? And seeing none, we'll move on to our youth city council report, and this is our youth city council coordinator, Gunnison Clam.
Good evening, council. It's our first report of the year, and this is the, should be the only time you see me giving this report because at our first official business meeting of the year for youth council, we'll start our appointing youth council members to be the delegates to report to you all. But I just wanted to give a quick update, especially with all the appointments having just concluded, that we've completed orientation that most members of youth council were able to make, and that we've started with the groundwork for the year. They've laid out projects for the year that they'll be reporting to you throughout the term. We have a group of 10 students this year, so once again, nearly a complete full council. So we're very much looking forward to seeing what they can do this year. And as always, Brusada and I just want to deliver our thanks for council's support for this program.
And I would like to flip that back at you and say thank you. We appreciate the hard work that you and Brusada do in coordinating these kids. I know it's a lot of fun, but it's a lot of work as well, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
City council comments.
I had the opportunity to go to the grand opening for Rondaboo, which is the new senior housing that the VOA opened in Pavilion, what they call Pavilion Garden. And that came all about because the city of Montrose helped them with a CDBG grant. It doesn't echo here, Jase. So Jase spent a whole lot of work doing that community development grant, but I was very impressed that day when I got there. Their retirement, I'm going to say retirement village, I guess they don't have to be retired, but they have to be older. But it's more than just, it's just, they're like boxes to live in. They have all kinds of amenities around the area, and of course, they really play off the fact that they like to do things at the Pavilion and at the Botanic Garden. And it was just one of those heartwarming things. I was just really glad I was there. And Jase, of course, got up. This was very well attended. There were, what, 100 people there or so? And Jase got up and said, of course, anybody wants a grant, just ask the city of Montrose, and Jase will write it for them. So thanks, Jase.
Any other city council comments?
I know, one that one.
I just wanted to mention that there are a lot of upcoming events as the approaching holiday season, and the next big thing coming up is going to be our Halloween celebration, our candy crawl. And this year, we will actually be closing down Main Street from Townsend to Park in order to make it safer and more fun. We're going to have bounce houses, and a lot of the businesses along Main Street will be handing out candy. And it's a great opportunity, and I would like to encourage parents, do a little shopping, help their businesses out, help support our businesses that are being such great participants in this event. And look forward to all of the great Christmas events that are going to be coming up very soon. And we wish everybody a really pleasant week this week, and with that, we are adjourned.